All right, it is six o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and get started with the planning commission meeting tonight. I've asked Commissioner Mitchell if he'd lead us in the pledge.
Audience, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to excuse Commissioner Tanner, who's not here tonight. He's hopefully having some fun with his family. Looking at our agenda, it looks like the first item we've got on our agenda is the minutes from February 5th, 2020. Is there a motion on that?
I would make a motion to accept minutes on February 5th.
Second that.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next is the preliminary plat. First one on there is the ridge amended. So the proposal is to amend the ridge preliminary plat. Brandon, are you gonna speak on that for us?
I'm going to describe it for you. We all close our eyes. Jesse, if you want to help out? We've got some high quality. No, I'm just kidding.
We've got the images in front of us at least, so.
Let's see.
We're trying to get them out for a second.
Oh, there we go. Perfect. So while that's coming up, this came before you back in 2014. The preliminary plat was originally approved then. Oh, if we can go to the next slide. One more, sorry. This one here. So this is the current preliminary plat. That came before you back in 2014. Oh, there we go.
Don't push any buttons.
Everybody cross your fingers. So, and Jesse. Our applicant is here tonight. He could probably speak to some of the details as far as some of the proposed changes. In a nutshell, he's coming back before you tonight to look at just making some minor tweaks to the preliminary plat. And we'll highlight some of those in just a second. There's an actual decrease by, I believe, five units overall. Increase in parking, and a few different layouts in some of the areas. You'll see a different layout here. Previously, there was a different layout, slight amendment made here. So we've just requested that the preliminary plat be amended to represent those changes before he moves forward with the remaining phases, which are four and five. And then he's currently got this phase under review. So if we go back a slide, this is the proposal that's here before you tonight. So if you notice, there was a slight change here. Here, the change is due to a different type of product. And so up here, you can see we've got three-story. This is gonna be a two-story product down here. And then I believe four and five are gonna be similar product to what you see out by Highway 6. One noticeable addition is Avery Lane, which has come through. And we'll let the applicant speak to potentially what might come into play with that in the future. And then we already touched on the housing unit decrease, the parking increase, and then the product variation. The DRC did look at this just last month and recommended approval with no conditions. And so in the staff report, you'll see that we've got the findings there that can be incorporated into any motion that's made tonight.
Any questions for staff?
Questions for staff or the applicant?
Maybe for the applicant. So you may touch on the buildings that are going to be built, the ones that are proposed now, and then on four and five, if they're going to be the three-story. That's what I think I heard.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and that was always the plan. The changes that were made were made here, and then if you go back to that... I don't know which way it is, but, oops. Right there, you can see we had like, I don't know, it's like a fifteen or twelve plex or something there. But we split it up. Really, the thing that kind of caused these changes, just market. We're just trying to find the right product, you know? And so we ended up putting in some larger townhomes here. So we split these up. And we actually took two, we took three homes out of these three buildings to make it work. And we took another home out of here and just to give us some larger footprints. The two-story product that we build is quite large. It's a four-bedroom. These are slab-on-grade, so there's no basement. So it's four bedrooms, master on the main. They're a really attractive plan that people like. And so we came in here and we're doing those in here now. So it just, really, it's different footprints, different sizing. So we've actually reduced our overall unit count by five from what we were preliminarily approved for, just trying to, you know, fit some of those, some more of those in. They're real popular and it seems to be what people like. So, and then we came in and we added Avery Lane to our design. And we purchased this back acre here from the Hall family. And we also just purchased this, almost two acres here from the Braithwaite's. And so, you know, this hasn't been submitted yet, but our hope is to design and plan another product here of homes, actually kind of a single-family product, just to give a little more variance to the neighborhood. And we'd like to keep it within the ridge and keep it all part of the same development, but to come in here with some single-family homes. And then over here on this piece, utilize this fold road that we're installing right now and come in with a similar product to these two-story, larger townhomes and put them in here. So.
With garages on the back, so you'd have a road just like you've got there.
Everything here, and it's kind of funny because people see these and they don't, they don't see the garages because they're in the rear. And so, but everything, everything we build has a two-car garage. It's either two cars wide or it's two cars deep. We do have one that's a single wide, but it's too deep. And so that's, you know, it's what we're up.
You foresee, I don't see any other parking other than those driveways for each unit. You must not foresee much more traffic. One of my concerns is, is a four-bedroom unit, you know, seems like we grow larger families around here, and a lot of times we have three to four cars.
Yeah, you can't see the parking, but there is, there's a few stalls here. There's several stalls up here. We have met the requirement on parking, not including the streets, knowing that that's not something we can count on. But, and same over here on this design and in here, we're, we're planning for that. And I think Brandon mentioned that we actually have more than what is required. It's.
You have parking up here.
Yeah, there's parking.
Back in these areas.
Yeah, there's quite a bit kind of thrown in and mixed in here. It's kind of, it's, this was kind of an unknown theory that I had when we started this project. And for those of you that have been around Spanish Fork for a while, I developed Somerset Village. And we, my frustration there as a developer was we would give people a two-car garage and then a 25-foot driveway. Garage was a storage unit, and they parked their cars in the driveway. We essentially took that away from them. They don't have that driveway. And I'm telling you, it works. If you drive through, we don't have a lot of cars parked on the road. I mean, there may be one or two, but I think that's expected on the city street. But we don't have any people breaking our parking law because there's nowhere else for them to park and there's no driveways. So they park in their driveway, in their garage. And it was kind of a good experience, so, experiment.
Nice. So overall, you've decreased by five units?
Yes.
Is that, has any area increased in the phasing, or is it all just been decreasing each phase?
So I take that back. So this, this has broken up into a phase, phase four right here, and this is phase five. So phase four decreased one, and phase five increased three. And every, this stayed the same. And these, these all decreased by a couple. So. And in that, what, really what it was is just a change in the unit, or the footprint of the homes that we're building in there. So there's, there's one called our Midtown, which is a two-bedroom, two-bath. So there's a few more of those in there. And then we actually took some of those out of here so we could put in the larger two-story homes. So.
Very good. Thanks.
No additional questions, then this is a, not a recommendation, but an approval, and I would take a motion.
I would make a motion that the proposed amended preliminary plat of the ridge, the ridge development be approved.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second that.
Okay. Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next agenda item is the RRBC commercial subdivision.
If we can go to the next slide? Okay, so this slide will orient where we are. So to the top is north, to the east, you see Highway 6 coming in on an angle to the south of the screen. You've got 800 north. What we're looking at for this is a preliminary plat approval. This is a standard subdivision. And so the planning commission would be the land use authority to make, oh. Make the decision on this item. Roughly, we're looking at four, just under four and a half acres. Most recently, the building that you see there was the old Vasa site, which has been recently torn down, as well as these homes here. The property owner is prepping the ground for the project that you've got tonight, as well as some site plans that are working their way through the process. The property is Zone C2, general commercial. They are looking at a four-lot subdivision. If we go to the next slide. Oh, this is washed out. Let's go to the next one. This shows the four-lot layout. The shaded area that you see coming up through, this would be an access easement as well as shared utility easement. And you can see the four-lot layout. Access would be provided off of 800 north as well as 700 east. There's no access from Highway 6 as currently existing. The DRC did look at this last month and does have some conditions that were included in your staff report motion. Some of the key issues are the future development and just making sure that there's adequate improvements being provided. Storm drain facilities, which our engineering has been looking at, as well as access management. So as far as the conditions that you see in the motion, there's the second one that largely relates to the concerns that were passed on to you from the DRC. One is, if we go to the next slide, oh, shoot, it's washed out even worse. The first one is a dedicated right turn lane. So here on this, you can see they kind of narrow it down, neck it down. And so what the DRC would like to see is that just continues straight, and this become a dedicated right turn lane so that people coming off of Highway 6 that want to enter the site don't have to merge and then make that turn. The second was just verifying that they use the adequate entrance. I know there was some discussion whether they should use a standard drive approach or, I don't know what this is called, with the turn radius. We'll let Mike speak to that in just a second. The third condition they had was making sure that we had all potential right-of-way that was needed for the High-T intersection project that UDOT is gonna be commencing in the near future. If we go back three slides to the aerial, one more. So this intersection here is gonna be redone. Oh, there we go. Even better.
Nice.
And so the idea is if we're gonna approve it, we want to try and make sure that we're obtaining any necessary right-of-way dedication with the intent that if we have them put in improvements, those don't have to then be torn out a year or two from now as UDOT comes through and does this project. And so.
So, Brian, what's the timeline on this? When are they gonna start?
I believe next summer, build in the summer after that, unless we can get it faster.
Yeah, we'd love to bump it up soon.
As UDOT's schedule, if there's a chance we might be able to have the seat just paid, meaning we'd be involved in making it go faster, not say more monetary. And that'd be strictly for maybe making this happen faster, but that's still in flux right now.
Thanks.
In addition to this, so you're talking about another decel lane here, right?
Yes. Correct. And then I don't necessarily feel it needs to be further clarified, but if you feel it's necessary, a third condition could be added. And that's just verifying. I kind of worded it on my paper just before the meeting started that maybe a third could be that the applicant meet any road dedication requirements as determined with city engineering. And so that would just be for the project in general. I know we've kind of focused most of our attention here on this southeast corner. I don't have any other.
So would that be, would they widen this as it is now? Would they widen that portion of the road to accommodate that lane? And then also widen this into the parking area as it is now to, for the entrance into, is that?
I think there'd be one lane, how it's shown in the throat, we'll call it, coming off Highway 6.
Yes.
And then we'd be able to divide on those that want to turn versus go straight through.
Will require any widening of that street?
So this would be as wide as it needs to be today. The thing would be down here, UDOT kind of loses interest once you get this far away. But when, we don't want to have people trying to merge and have a right-hand turn in this spot right here. So for another 20 feet, being able to widen this out, give someone a right turn in and a straight through. So then you don't have any chance of back up, back into this area here.
What about people coming out, turning right here, and you have somebody coming down, going straight? Is there gonna be, are we gonna have congestion right there? Does that need to be extended further to the west?
Good. Yeah. This is a concept we turned into MAG to get funding. UDOT said we wanna, we're working on Highway 6 anyway. Why don't we joint do this? And UDOT will take over the design of it. And this is still back in concept. UDOT hasn't really designed or done their own study on it. This is just our concept, hopefully piggyback on their US 6 widening project. So yeah, that would be something to look at as well.
Wish if we go back to the PowerPoint. I think the applicant was depending on that being about mid-block, just based on the way they laid things out. Go two slides, please. Yeah, so it's, one more if it'll work. Now, you can't really see it. So their proposal is there's a path here. They had a restaurant path here, convenience store proposed here. And then this one's still a question mark. It could be retail or restaurant, food service.
Convenience store, gas station, any of these pumps?
Yeah, you can see the canopy. And so this would be the only entrance permitted off of 8th North and then north. And then they'd have a second entrance for the entire site that would be off of 7th East. And so at some point, we don't want to get it too close to that intersection, 7th and 8th.
So you got, I'm sure you considered it, if you got a semi truck trying to get in there, making a right turn and another right turn to get into the convenience store, how's that gonna work?
So this concept was in 2017 before the, when there was still Vasa, there were passenger cars. Now the possibility of a gas station, we've asked Maverick, or the gas station, Maverick, whoever, to say, well, what do you need? What is your service capabilities here? So asking the owner of the property, do we need to plan a semi making these turns in? Do you have a smaller delivery possibility? What can you commit to? Because yeah, if they need a trailer with a pup trying to get in there, it may or may not work. Same, they need to adjust their deliveries, and we may need to accommodate something as well. So there's still some variables that are still up in the air.
They also have the possibility of coming in this way as well.
Yeah.
That could help them.
Looping around and back out.
Yeah. So it's just with the right-of-way being needed for the roadway widening here, is there enough room to put a gas station here with pumps and have the truck be able to turn and make it in and out? So this is the plating stage, but this is also usually when there's some right-of-way taken. But with the design out, we're still trying, anyway, we're trying to get that right-of-way line as soon as possible.
Make it fit.
Yeah. We have some working on that right now. We should be giving it back to the landowner next week. So then they can make a decision of how much, based on how much is taken, what tenant is still interested. And if they are interested, how can they make the site work for them, given the constraints? So yes, the size of truck turning is a really big deal. And then Todd, back to your point, how much do we need to widen this end section is another one we need to look further into. It's a great, great point. Do we need two lanes, an excel, a decel lane, or is it okay to have that based on traffic demand? So.
So are we working? We have two lanes merging into one there, and people.
And a turn movement as well.
Yeah.
Are we working with four entities here, or is there one developer with?
All one property owner. And they're very interested in trying to move forward with a subdivision of the property. And so understandably, they're being patient as we try and coordinate this right-of-way with UDOT, knowing that UDOT doesn't have a final design on it yet.
How are they, how many parking spaces do they have? How are we sitting on parking?
Tonight, we're not reviewing the site plan, and so I don't have any parking numbers for you.
For this one or this one? We actually don't have a site plan at all for any of these three.
Yeah, no site plan for one, three, and four. Lot two has come through on site plan.
Any other questions? There's no questions, then anybody want to make a motion? Okay.
We have a question?
My question is, I live right across the street from where you're talking about.
No, no, no.
But, oh, okay.
This is the old storehouse.
Oh, all right.
So you're not here yet.
Oh, okay, fine.
Wait for the next item?
You'll be the first up on the next one.
We'll be ready for you.
We're good.
All right. Back to the motion.
So in order, Donald got us button-in stuff.
You're totally fine. Totally fine.
I'll make a motion that we recommend the approval of the RRBC commercial subdivision preliminary plat approval request with the following findings and conditions.
This is a, not a recommendation, but we're approving this.
Just approving the, yeah, just approving the preliminary plat with the findings and conditions.
Okay, I've got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Moving now on to general plan amendment and zone change. This one is a public hearing. And this is for Quiet Valley. Dave, you taking this one?
Snuck right in, didn't you?
Yeah. Back row. There are a couple of different parts to this proposal, a general plan amendment and a zone change. For you to make a recommendation on those two items, you do need to hold a public hearing. We have provided notice for that hearing, so we hope that you do that tonight. And I'm just gonna start with a little bit of history about the city's involvement in the area. The majority of the properties involved in the changes that we'll talk about tonight are owned by Spanish Fork City. There's some 50 or so acres right here that the city purchased back in 2000, and I think probably it was 2007. The thought that the city had at that point in time was that that property might work well as a park. To make a long story short, we don't think that is a good fit for the community. We don't think that's a good use for the property at this point in time. So we are, as staff, exploring different options as to what might be a better fit and better use of the property. Right now, I don't know if we can just maybe go to the, like, the current general plan map if we have that. This is a good one. Let's start with that one, actually. That's great. So this isn't the general plan. This is zoning. We'll be talking about this in just a minute as well. This is helpful, I think, to illustrate what properties right now are in the city and what aren't. It's kind of unusual to have a peninsula of property that's in a community that's kind of surrounded by county lands and otherwise separated from city properties like this is. In the early 2000s, this property was annexed, and it was zoned industrial at that point in time. City staff, council were working potentially to have a very large industrial user locate on that property, and that deal fell through. But the property was annexed, and it was zoned industrial, and it stayed that way for quite some time. I believe it was six or seven years ago when part of the property was, instead of being zoned industrial at that point in time, the city-owned properties were changed from industrial zoning to public facilities zoning. So the gray that you see here, that area is still zoned industrial, and the blue is zoned public facilities. Incidentally, the blue color, that really helps to see what the city owns. This is kind of curious here. And I'll talk about this in a little different context in a minute. But the property that the city owns is riddled by humongous power lines, really, really big ones. The corridor that extends all the way through what we sometimes call the northeast bench, we've talked about it a little bit relative to legacy farms in recent years. They sort of originate in the community right here in Spanish Fork, and that's not it. There are other power lines that are really significant as well on the property that tend to run east and west, also through the site. But that's why this map is illustrated the way that it is. The property here is owned by Rocky Mountain Power, and because of that, that was not zoned public facilities a few years ago. So it makes sense, just kind of relative to the history, a little bit going back years and years and years as to how property came to be in the community, a little bit about the zoning history, maybe to go from there and to fast forward. It was just a few years ago that city councils, yeah, that image is great. Actually, let's go back to that one.
General plan.
Just have the general plan on, yeah. And some of you guys were around, some of you guys were around, I think, in different contexts when there was considerable thought given after concerns were raised about the difficulty that people were finding in Spanish Fork to locate lots where they could build bigger homes. And at that point in time, our general plan was changed a little bit with the idea that there needed to be certain parts of the community identified and might say set aside or preserved for lower-density development than what we currently really were working with. At that point in time, this area was modified on the general plan to where this, these colors aren't terribly distinct. So I'll try to point them out as best as I can. This area here with this particular color, that designation on the general plan was changed, which, when we talk about the general plan, we're really talking about future land use. And I might almost say as well, it's kind of a roadmap for zoning and decisions that would impact exactly what a neighborhood would look like in the future. This particular designation is distinct from others in the area in that it would allow for fewer homes to be. in that it would allow for fewer homes to be built in a particular area. We could say fewer homes per acre than what we see maybe in closer proximity to Maple Mountain High School or maybe than what we see on the other side of US 6 to the south. Incidentally, the number of homes that somebody could build on a particular sized area here matches what we find up above the river bottoms where properties are currently being developed. Vincent Ridge, if you're familiar with that subdivision. It has the same general plan designation, and we would expect likewise that it would have similar zoning as well. Or this area would have zoning that would be similar to what that area there has. When this designation of that area was changed, we kind of speculated as well that we didn't think that, long-term, this property, which we've called the gravel pit for years and years and years, that's what it historically has been. We didn't think that that any longer really made sense to be reserved for future park development. And the designation on the general plan at that point in time was changed to medium-density residential. So, we have estate-density residential to the north, which basically is two units to the acre, two homes per acre or fewer. And we have, right now, this medium-density designation, which would allow potentially for somebody to go up to five or so units to the acre. Does that make sense relative to what we're talking about from kind of this long-range vision for land use? So, now to jump forward to where we're at tonight. This property here that the city owns, as well as other properties in the area, currently, they don't have access to infrastructure. There's no access to city power. It's kind of ironic. There are huge power lines running through the property, but they can't be used to develop locally. So, getting power to the properties is expensive. It can be done, but it's expensive. Sewer, same thing. There are sewer lines available to the south, but they really don't work across the railroad tracks and US Highway 6 very well to serve the development of that property there. The closest sewer line right now is not too far from Maple Mountain High School. So, if that gives you some perspective on the scale and scope of what, and therefore the expense of what getting sewer to this property would be like, I think that does illustrate well what a challenge that is.
So, you would have to stay north of the railroad and Highway 6 for any utilities?
Actually, I think power would come from the other side most easily. That's what we've discussed most recently. Curiously enough, water quite possibly will come under the state highway, State Highway 89, and the railroad tracks to the east. At least, that's kind of what our folks are exploring now.
Sewer, then's the difficulty.
Well, and even with that, both of those two things, they're really expensive as well. So, sewer, I think sewer, if I recall right, that probably is the big-ticket item. And here's where we're at, just maybe to kind of cut to the chase. I don't think our city council wants to own this property a whole lot longer. So, we're exploring the prospect of disposing of the property. We have made an investment in the property, and it's not small. That is, the city has. The city spent a lot of money on the property back in 2007. I don't think the city's looking necessarily to make money on the deal, but rightfully so. I think the council is very concerned about making sure that the taxpayers of the community get their money back.
It's a swap, but it was sort of.
And it ended up being part of that. Yeah, that was an aspect as well that frankly kind of added to the expense of the property. In a curious fashion, the city's purchase of this property actually allowed the area around Costco to develop and the park that was there before 2008 to be redesigned and some things like that. And since then, we've gone through another step so that that's no longer an issue here. But Commissioner Davis is good to point out that there's a lot of history that we've had with the property. So, part of our motivation.
Frisbee golf, you got frisbee golf there.
Yeah, for a few years. I appreciate that. Hopefully, there has been some public benefit and good that's come from the city owning the property. You can get a feel for where I'm going. We're trying to do what we can now to get the property to a point to where somebody would be interested potentially in buying it. The infrastructure costs are, it's very significant. We've talked with folks on a very regular basis over the years about other, about people buying it at different points in time in the past. And the utility costs have been why people haven't given the city a bona fide offer to date. Utility costs sometimes and the number of homes that you can put on a property end up becoming very closely connected. So, the concern that we have about the current designation of this property right here, based on conversations that we've had with people, is that at five homes per acre, nothing's going to happen. Or that it's going to be a number of years before something happens. So, part of the proposal that is before you tonight involves changing the designation of this property so that it could be developed at five units to the acre to where it could be developed, perhaps something more like eight units to the acre. That's not something that we, as staff, view as being a tremendously significant change. And I think that's why we're comfortable recommending that that be considered and approved. A couple of other things I need to point out relative to this property. Some of you are familiar with it, maybe some of you aren't. It is in horrible condition. It's been a gravel pit. It has been a place where we, as a city, have taken debris and material. You see that on the property. It doesn't necessarily have a lot of curb appeal. And like I said, it's riddled with easements of several different types. Power lines are obvious, you see those. There is a huge water line that runs through the property now as well. Typically, we don't see properties like that develop at your low-density kind of part of a density scale. Also, given the different ways that the property is carved up. And I wonder, maybe, Mike, if it makes sense just to zoom in on that property a little bit more closely without that general plan later on, so you can get maybe some feel for what I'm talking about. You can see there are depressions, there are mounds, property's not level, power lines that run through at different points. The likelihood that we would see somebody come and be able to design a subdivision with lots for single-family houses here and to do that in a way that they felt like that investment made sense and was worthwhile, I think is pretty low. At least, again, like I've said, that's been our experience to date. So, that's quite a bit on the history just of what's gotten us, I think, as staff here today to talk about this particular property and why we think it makes sense at least to open up the door for a potential buyer to have an opportunity to propose something at a density that exceeds five units to the acre. Also involved in the proposed general plan amendment are properties to the north, like we saw with that zoning map a minute ago. Properties to the north, their zoning hasn't changed from the time that they were annexed. It was industrial, it's been industrial. I've met with property owners to the north, and they basically gave us their recommendation on how the general plan and then the zoning map be changed for those properties. And we're recommending that that be approved. That involves changing the general plan, simply so that next to the railroad tracks, and now maybe it might make sense to go back to Brandon's presentation, so that there be an area next to the railroad tracks on this area and even beyond that could be developed with a little bit higher density than the estate-density designation. But otherwise, the remainder of the property would keep that estate-density designation. I think that's important. Again, I think as staff, we're not necessarily comfortable recommending that there be broad changes kind of the future land use pattern in the area. We've heard you speak very clearly, I think, about how seriously the commission has taken that estate-density designation, at least on one other proposal that we've had in the area to change that. And that being said, still, we're comfortable with the idea of next to railroad tracks and what potentially could happen here, having a little bit greater density than what currently is allowed for. So, then this translates into proposed zone changes as well that we ask you to consider tonight that would change the zoning on the areas that are currently designated public facilities. From that to R3 and then to the north, again, just following what we've been given by the property owners to the north, having a portion of that property changed from industrial to R1-9 and the remainder from industrial 1 to R1-15. R1-15 being consistent with that estate-density designation. That's what Vincent Ridge is zoned.
How big is the area that wants to go to R1-9? What's the width of that through there?
260 feet with the idea that 100-foot depth on lots, 60-foot road, another 100 feet of depth on lots on the other side.
City has a well in this area, the Olson Well. Is the city going to continue to operate that well? Or are we thinking about abandoning that as well?
It's my understanding that it's been abandoned.
It's a poor well.
We had a conversation this afternoon about it with, it's Lance Hess. He's our environmental consultant that we use. He's done a Phase 1 recently for us on the property that the city owns. That's one of the things that he has suggested that we look into further. Sounds like he might want to get in touch with you just relative to the history. Basically, the idea is, at this point, we just want to explore what we need to do to properly cap and do away with that forever, so.
Probably why it's not a good well.
I would assume if it was, we'd still be using it maybe.
The right would still be available to be moved, but.
We had a conversation about that as well, yeah. So, anyway, to maybe recap, the city owns a piece of property that we think is going to be very challenging to develop in a lot of different ways. We hope to help accelerate the development process of the city property by potentially allowing for more homes to be located on that site. Certainly, if the city property develops, then other properties in the area as well will be much more ready for development, given the infrastructure that would be available in the area. That's not to say that they would need to develop quickly or that they necessarily would, but I think it'd be foolish to believe that the development pressure for the area wouldn't increase.
So, does the city foresee utilities such as water, sewer, and everything come up this road? Is that what the city foresees, is the utilities coming into the area, that everything will go that way? I guess that's about the only thing, unless you're going to come through here someplace through the fields.
Yes. I can draw the alignment wherever we go, but there's a road already here. It comes down this way, so we'd follow that alignment for sewer. Other than that, there's a power line corridor that cuts right through. There's obviously no buildings underneath it and other restrictions. So, we've looked at putting potentially water, for sure, pressure irrigation, but probably water along that corridor as well.
Pressurized. That's okay.
Any other comments or questions for Dave? Okay, this is a public hearing. Before we move into public hearing, just a couple of reminders. If you approach and have some comments, make sure first that you state your name. And also with comments, if you could try and limit those to three minutes. And also, if someone's already gotten up and said something, try not to repeat what's already been said, if that's possible. And with that, we will move into public hearing.
How many acres are we involved in this?
First, what's your name?
How many?
What is your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Bertine Baum.
Bertine Baum, thank you, Bertine. Okay, how many acres?
How many acres are involved in this housing thing we're talking about?
Looks like 119. Is that what I'm seeing on the?
Okay. With that many acres, high-density housing, we could move all to Spanish Fork right up there.
Maybe.
Where's the park going to be? What kind of a park?
Okay.
If you're going to have that many houses, you've got to have a park of some sort.
Correct.
How big of a park and where is it going to be?
Are you asking us at this time?
I'm asking that.
So, to answer that, right now, we're only talking about a possible zone change.
Okay.
To talk about how many houses and the park and what all of that would look like, whoever purchased this property from the city would then need to come before the planning commission with a plan showing where the homes would be, where the roads would be. And yes, they would be required to have a certain amount of green space.
But before we have high-density housing, stop and think how many acres that is and how many houses you put in at high density.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So, I'm Mark Baum, and I own the property that's directly across the street. And the property was actually in really good shape up until the mid-'80s until the gravel pit came in. But what I wanted to say is, we've actually, when it was a frisbee golf course, we actually used to walk on the road that was the old gravel pit road. And it was actually a very nice walk. If it would have been like trees and, you know, some vegetation and stuff like that, it could have been nicer, but it had some nice terrain changes and some nice difference. So, I'm curious, because the person who spoke earlier said that they didn't think it was a good use for a park. I don't know where that came from, because the golf course, when it was a frisbee golf course, was never completed. It was always a, there was no curb appeal even when it was a frisbee golf course. So, I'm curious why it was never good as a park. Because from my experiences from being across the street, I think it would have been a nice park. And personally, I'm not like high-density housing, but I would definitely prefer that to industry.
My name's Sheila Hanson, and my husband and I and our partners own, let's see if I can make this work, the storage facility that is right here. We own this property line all the way up to here. So, we border with the railroad tracks, the property that the city owns. We are in full support of this change. We think it's a great change to have happen, including the change for the property to the north of it. We are completely in support of it. The only thing that we would ask is that a condition be placed, that a fence be placed upon the property line where the railroad tracks are. Our concern is if homes are placed there, children, teens, adults that want to do drug dealing or whatever, that way would be able to cross the railroad tracks, and they would have complete seclusion at the back of our property because it's a, I mean, they're big, tall buildings, and they could do whatever they wanted to do there. And so, we just recommend that a fence be placed, like a, kind of like the fencing that you guys have north, more kind of by the Walmart and where you go to the Maple Mountain High School. And there's the homes there, and there's a fence line along there. And I know that eventually, I understand that the railroad tracks will be turned into possibly a walking trail. Is that correct?
Possibly.
Possibly. Yeah, that's the hope, but it's probably like 10 years down the road or something, a long time. So, it's fine to have some entrances into it where there's good visibility and stuff, but we just didn't want it to be where kids could just come and get on the railroad tracks and be able to cross over, because there's quite a, there's like a divide down. So, it's like a V to our property, and they would have an area there where they could do bad stuff, you know, get into trouble. So, and, but we're in complete support of the change, and we think it'll be a great thing for the city.
That's part of our city specs for stuff like that.
Oh, perfect. That's great. That's what we wanted to just ask.
This is one farther down Legacy Farms, but similar.
Yeah, the similar fence. Yeah, that's great.
All along the back.
Just something that would kind of make children or youths say, no, we can't go there, you know? So, okay, great.
Sheila?
Hey, I lived, and I've lived.
Hey, I lived, and I lived by railroad track all the time. They didn't have a big old fence there.
Yeah, well, Pete, you played on the fence.
That's right. We smashed pennies on it, right?
You killed on the tracks too recently, the last couple of years, so.
Smashed a lot of pennies.
I'm Ken Hanson, I'm Sheila's husband. Like she said, we're in full support of the change. I just wanted to reiterate that what Dave said about the utilities and the availability, because of the development the city allowed us to put in, we are intimately aware of the utility challenges in that area. That property won't develop unless we can get the density that Dave specified. It just won't.
Thanks, Ken.
My name is Charles Stewart. I have some prepared remarks. I'm the owner on the northern twenty-seven acres in this proposal, and my comments are also on behalf of my other owners that are not here. Planning staff reached out to us in January for a meeting to discuss alternate land uses in this area of Spanish Fork. In this meeting, we were told that the city would rezone their property to high density multifamily, and there would be a transition to one-third acre lots on our property. The city suggested at that time that there would be additional meetings to discuss the city's proposal with our group. We have not heard from the city and the public notice received in the mail was only, was the only communication we have had since. We want to make it clear that we are in support of the city's plan to rezone their property, but feel there are, there has not been enough discussions around the transitions and subsequent land uses of our property. With this, we ask you table this item till the next meeting so we can have further conversations with the city staff around the land uses and our property. Thank you for your time and consideration.
So which property shares then, just short?
It's the twenty-seven acres. It's the blue turquoise blue property. And we have owned it since two thousand and seven as well. So we've been patiently waiting for infrastructure to come our way, but it's not coming. Will not come unless something is done to make it more attractive to developers.
So you're not concerned about this becoming a property that could be used for homes? You would just like more clarification of where the density, how the density would be spaced out?
Well, we just feel like we want a fair shake at the density proposal that.
When you say a fair shake, do you mean you would like higher density in your area as well? Or do you?
Well, if you compare, I don't think there's any way you can compare the Vincent Ridge development, estate lots to our property. The Vincent Estate lots are very attractive, very appealing, whereas our property is boarding railroad tracks on basically two sides along with major Highway eighty-nine and Highway six, so.
So somebody talked to you about an R one five on your property at all? I mean.
Well, we started, we opened discussions with the city. And then we were wanting to have more meetings to discuss further options of what density would be allowed for our property. But then we received this notice that the, this meeting was, that we're having today came about, so. Anyway, so we just feel like we need to have more discussions with the city to make sure it's an equitable distribution of the high density, not just on the city's property, but on ours as well.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
My name's Matt Loveland. I, we're in partnership with the Johnson Family Partnership, who Charles is actually a member of, that partnership. And then we're also representing the owners who are directly south in between the Johnsons' property and the city property. I just had a couple of quick questions that I just wanted to get some more clarity on. This came rather quick, and I want to just make it clear, the city property, we have no issues with the proposed land use, both in the general plan and the zoning. But again, going, kind of echoing Charlie's comments, we feel like we need to have a little more equitable discussion about transitions and what we can do. So my first question is, when the current general plan, if you don't mind pulling that up, Mike, when the current general plan was approved with medium density residential, what held the city back from just approving high density residential as the land designation at that time?
Okay, you got your question, we'll ask Dave after, after public hearing's done.
Of course. So, both the general plan and the staff report, they suggest that we have a gradual transition of land uses between the R three and then obviously the estate lot. What's currently proposed is with the R three, that's up to twelve units per acre. And with the land uses being proposed on our property, it's three units per acre. And it doesn't feel like a gradual transition. And so again, I'd just like to ask, what were some of the factors that led to go from twelve to three over that two hundred and sixty-foot buffer? And Mike, I think Julie actually sent you a, an attachment. In looking at the, the city's general plan and with other zoning designations that have been approved, we're all for tiering back the intensity of the use, going from the R three on the city property and also preserving the estate lots in this area, because we know that's a very sensitive thing for the community. And we have no issue with that. But looking at the, how quickly we transition and making sure it's a gradual transition, we would like to propose that the general plan be modified or at least considered, that the high density designation remain in that general area as outlined, and then go to a medium density designation, similar to what's elsewhere in the city. Not two hundred feet, but more eight hundred, a thousand feet like elsewhere. Then transition into low density while preserving obviously the mass of that acreage with the estate density lot, so that we have that nice transition and then also the different product types to, you know, create a well-rounded community. So that's the general plan. And then on the, on the zoning, in all, in place of the R one nine just along the southern two hundred and sixty feet and then the rail line, we're asking for an R one six zoning to again, just help with that transition from the R three, use common planning practices, maybe take it to an R one eight, maybe an R one twelve, and then R one fifteen, again on the bulk of the property in this area, so. And I would like to also echo Charlie's comments. If, if this proposal is not in line with something that would be entertained, at least to recommend to the council, we also ask just to table this just for two weeks, just so we could further the dialogue, where this was kind of a last minute notice for us. So, any questions for me? Thank you for your time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Julie Smith with Philstone, can you go to the general plan? Just real quick, yeah, and zoom way, way out. Okay, so over and.
Red line. There's a red line up a little higher.
Oh, I got it. Okay. So if you can kind of see throughout the city, that I've been here, when you guys have done the master planning, there's always transition everywhere in the city. They have kind of big swaths of ground. I don't know, I think if we zoom out more, you can see that's kind of the general plan that the city's always done. And that's kind of like what we are representing down in our area, is just to continue that same trend that you've had before and not quite a spot zone, if you will, that just continue that, that zoning, is my only comment.
Come on, Joseph, come on up here.
Okay, seeing no other comments, we will move out of public hearing. Well, what do you guys think?
Maybe staff can answer a few of the questions that were brought up. Dave?
So, a couple of questions I've got, and fill me in if I missed any. Why, what was the city's reason for not developing the Frisbee Park or continuing on a park? Why not high density initially? Why was it medium to begin with? And then the alternative proposal that was brought up? And what are your thoughts, Dave, of just recommending tonight the city's portion and tabling the rest? Anything else?
I've got a handful of others, too.
There's one. We'll see what your responses are.
Let's get on with it.
And I really, really appreciate the first guy that got up to speak. I think it is helpful maybe to talk a little bit more specifically about what we're proposing tonight and what that means. In terms of the number of homes that we're talking about, the city owns fifty acres. I would guess that maybe forty of it realistically are developable. Like I've said, it's going to be a challenge to cite different things on the property and to work around everything that somebody's going to have to deal with. That being said, let's be conservative, say that forty-five of those acres are developable and that a developer could fit six homes per acre on that site. That's three hundred and sixty homes. Right here, that's the number of homes basically in the apartment project that was approved by the council here a couple of months ago. It's not to say that this, this is going to be apartments. The R three zone wouldn't allow for that, it's a different zone, but just in terms of the scale, that's the number of homes that we'd be talking about there. Blended here, by the time you account for roads and everything like that, on what's probably a little bit less than forty acres, my guess is going to be that you'll be well under three units to the acre, but even at three units to the acre, that's a hundred and twenty homes. So we're talking about five hundred homes or less in the area. We've had a lot of years in Spanish Fork in recent years where there's been more than five hundred homes built in the city in a year. So that's just to kind of put a little bit of scale maybe to, to the overall size of what we're talking about.
Are you talking about the north and is that what you're putting these houses first?
I have no idea, so relative to the timing, we don't know, right? Exactly what part of the property would start to develop first or anything.
Your answer was, but you were talking about both properties combined.
Exactly, everything that's involved.
Was five hundred homes.
Ish. Probably less than that, really.
Right.
Yeah, we've done many developments similar in size. Wouldn't be any higher or lower, well, higher than what we've already done in some areas of town.
True. Now, great question also about parks. We plan typically in advance of development for parks to identify what a particular area is going to require. If you don't do that, things end up getting built and opportunities disappear. We have a parks master plan that currently, well, it covers the whole city. Currently, that's being updated. The city has contracted with, it's actually the same group that did our last version of our Parks and Recreation Master Plan back in two thousand and eight. They started on that project next month. My guess is that's a four, five, or six month process. It's maybe done late summer, early fall, or something like that. But they would identify what the future need for park space is for the area. And oftentimes, that means that we work with people when they propose developments and that type of a thing, to purchase land to make sure that there is space set aside for parks. Relative to the city having a change of heart, relative to the use of that site as a park, I can't really speak to that, except that I can say emphatically on behalf of our Parks Department, that they don't have any interest in seeing that be developed as a park. Proximity to railroad tracks, wind, different things like that, power lines, those are things that they've complained about over the years. So I think those are some of the reasons that they don't want the site utilized as a park. I've also incidentally heard them say that getting grass to grow on a property where there's no topsoil and the expense that it would, you know, you'd have to go through to restore that property to where it could be, you know, a park of, you know, some type that we might expect to have there. Lots of different reasons, but that's the direction that we have from our Parks Department, that they don't want that in their inventory. Which incidentally, this might influence why they feel a little bit about that. This property was bought with park impact fees. So if it gets sold, that fund gets replenished with the proceeds of that sale. That's, it would have to work that way, so. Trying to read their minds, but I would guess that's probably part of their train of thought as well about disposing of this property. So that's kind of the scale. I reached out to folks that had been in contact with me for years. Justin Irvine, he purchased some property here a few years ago. He's a local real estate broker, we talked to him a lot. So when we started to explode, excuse me, explore the process of changing the zoning here a couple of months ago, like the gentleman said, I reached out to Justin. He was kind enough, again, as was mentioned, to set up a meeting between me and the property owners that are involved in the potential zone change tonight as well. I thought we had a great discussion. I've looked at Justin to be kind of the spokesperson or, you know, my point of contact with them. That was discussed in the meeting. Justin and I have talked since the meeting. I don't know if you have an email that I just sent you a minute ago, if you can, if you can access that. But we've corresponded regularly. This proposal that you're seeing right here matches identically what he gave me. So we are simply trying to accommodate down to the foot, the depth, two hundred and sixty feet of depth on the R one nine zone here, what they requested. I regret if that wasn't communicated to everybody.
Justin is one of the property owners?
Yes.
Can I say something?
Justin is one of the property owners, yes. I'm certain of that. But that's just, I guess, how I would clarify the situation of communication and those types of things. I am certainly happy to meet with anybody anytime. I'm in the building a lot. My phone number is pretty public, email, things like that. But again, we didn't anticipate that anybody would have a concern with this because it's what they gave us.
Mr. Stewart brought up that you had commented in that meeting to be one-third acres. Nothing that we, and that's still showing on the proposed R one five.
So it would be a combination of third acre lots here and the R one nine? Yeah, that's what.
Were actually higher portions of it in that?
No, I, the intent at least is that what's proposed tonight matches that. Does that make sense? Maybe I'm missing.
That makes sense. I'm just saying, it's a little bit higher than what was discussed in that meeting from third acre lots to where you have that in the R one fifteen, but you also have R one nine.
That's right, yeah. So my original proposal to them was that we would zone the property consistent with the current general plan, and they said, you know, it makes some sense maybe to have some other designation between the tracks and the city property. And frankly, I don't think that's that important, but if that makes them feel more comfortable, we don't really see a big downside. So that's at least how we've talked about it with staff. So again, I'd love to meet anytime anybody has a need.
Charles, did you want to clarify property owners real quick?
Can you get the plan app to show the ownership once again? Can you, because Justin Irvine owns with his partners ten acres that's between our twenty-seven acres and the city's property. So I discussed, sent an email to Justin. Their property's the turn ways.
Okay, so theirs is in between the two?
Right.
Okay. So he doesn't have an issue then with, because he's communicated, but. So he doesn't have an issue then with, because he's communicated, but your portion, your property area you feel you've not had communication on?
Right.
Okay, okay, thank you. Is it different from what was just explained?
Slightly, yes.
Slightly?
Yes.
Give you one minute.
Absolutely, thank you. I know this is a little unworth it all, so. The other thing, just comparing the proposal that's there versus what was provided by Justin Irvine, is the scaling of that. If you notice, the R1-9 is probably 60% of all of that acreage, whereas in the, in this designation, I mean, you have 260 feet, it's one street. It's really not a community, you know, it's not differentiating between the two. So that's part of it, and then as my client mentioned, just the surprise of where we are now. Would like to address it a little bit further.
I don't think we've met, have we?
Nope.
And after you're with?
Fieldstone Homes.
You're with Fieldstone Homes. I didn't know Fieldstone was the property owner.
Uh, we are in a contract purchase.
Okay. The 260 feet, that was expressly discussed with the applicant, or the property owners of the north and myself. I think it might have been in our DRC meeting, they were good enough to have somebody attend that when it was talked about. So relative to the scale, again, that's a number that came directly from them. But again, we'd be more than happy to discuss, um, whatever somebody would like to talk about there. General plan amendment, zone change, they're a little bit different. Relative to the idea that, um, kind of has me a little bit perplexed. From a land use perspective, I think it's really, really hard to look at this property here in a similar fashion to anything that's around it. So the idea that you would need a transition from development that's in a hole to development that's not in a hole has me a little bit perplexed. So I don't know that I understand or agree with that logic at all. I will say this, um, that as staff, we're very comfortable with having the city's property zoned for development. And the, changing from the public facility zone to the R3 zone would do that. Once a property's zoning is changed, like we've talked about several times over the years, the city's discretion relative to what can be done to say yes or no to a particular design, density, style, any of those types of things, is really diminished. Where we own the property, I think we feel comfortable that ultimately the city council could still exercise oversight as to what actually gets built there, at least that's the intent. I won't hide at all the fact that we are changing the zoning to try to make the prospect of somebody buying it more appealing, without a doubt, and I think that certainly happens. The idea that we would change the zoning on other properties prior to going through a very typical development review process with plating and different things like that, to any zoning other than primarily R1-15, where the rules are really straightforward, you know, the prospect that the city would end up with something that would be a surprise or something that would be regrettable for the city is pretty light, such as having the property zoned R1-6, R1-8, or anything like that. There's absolutely no way that you would find anybody on staff that would say make those changes, again, until the project's been through the process that we follow here, to where you and the city council know exactly what you're getting at that zoning stage because you won't get another chance. That's just how things work, it's that legislative zoning decision that really governs everything. So, you know, kind of hearing those thoughts tonight, I guess, um, maybe I'll finish up just, uh, again, we're comfortable with this proposal here. Again, from my perspective, I think that's consistent with what we've discussed with our neighbors to the north. I think we'd also be consistent with just changing the city property and leaving it at that, relative to the general plan. Then relative to the zoning, it may be kind of a similar couple of options. What's been proposed in making that change, um, maybe just changing the zoning of the city property, or maybe changing the zoning on the properties to the north to what we call the holding zone, to rural residential, so that they could go through that process that I was describing to present, you know, detailed development plans, preliminary plat and that type of a thing, much like any of these properties over here will still have to do, properties that have been annexed into the city. I think those are still zone rural residential, I might be wrong, but.
What's the benefit of changing it to rural residential or just leaving it the way it is currently?
I think we'd prefer probably to not have the industrial zoning in the area when the infrastructure is available. That's the.
We've got that in other areas of the town that we're dealing with right now, so change it while we've got the chance.
So, again, for zoning, maybe just deal with the city property, leave everything else as is with the industrial. That makes me feel a little bit skittish looking at the holding zone kind of concept for the other properties that are in the city there, or, um, just going with this proposal here. Did I get all the questions?
When was the meeting notice given out to property owners for this meeting? When was that sent out to them?
Not last Friday, but the Friday before.
Dave, were we really in a big hurry to get this done?
I don't know, really. I've been directed to present it tonight and to notice it for public hearings, that's why we're here.
So why would it, if we just waited, if we continued this for one month and let the other property owners just come up and talk to you for one month and bring it back, or just act on the city piece of property and let the other owners come and talk to you? Maybe even zone it to an RR right now to hold it in place?
I like that idea of going with the RR now and having the conversations after, yeah.
See, I've got somebody, I've got somebody shaking his head that's a property owner that's, would rather come and talk to you. So, you know, so I'm just thinking, well, are we in that big of a rush that maybe someone could just come and talk to you for a month and?
That's really honestly for you guys to decide, I think.
I, from what I've heard from the property owners, they're waiting for infrastructure in the hopes of developing residential. So, changing it from industrial to even rural residential is that much closer, one step closer, to bringing homes and putting them on the property. So I don't see an issue, at least tonight personally, with at least moving in that direction. Because that gets rid of the industrial zone.
Some of the proposed zoning that was put up there, though, I would have to be convinced that we want to go that direction. I wouldn't agree with that zoning going through that area like it was shown.
I think that that needs, that would need to have further discussion.
Right.
And one of the things that that does is, is it doesn't follow property lines or roads or anything like that, but it is something that can be discussed with the property owners according to what their needs or what their wants would be. And it seems to me like, uh, dealing with the city's property now and the rest RR does give each individual property owner the opportunity to come in and make their proposal for a zone change, to do, you know, to, for their density, whatever their desire would be. My one concern is, is that right now that is in the estate. That's what the plan, uh, the city's plan is. So would we change that as well tonight?
I don't think so, personally. I think the.
Or does it make any difference?
I think the general plan, we would leave as is, which is the estate for the non-city portion of the north property. First, that is just me talking now. Though we, I think we've all agreed and there's not been any issue with the city's portion of this, am I right? So we're just talking at this point, the northern property. I think, I think, looking at the general plan, I would say we just leave that as is. But I don't have an issue at this point in changing the zoning on that northern property, rural residential, because we, I think we know we don't want it industrial. Is that correct?
I don't mean to interrupt, but certainly relative to meeting with anybody, if you make a recommendation tonight, there would be a public hearing with the city council in just about two weeks, and we certainly have time to meet with people then in advance of that.
So if we change it to rural residential, it still gives property owners the opportunity to approach the city on their own property.
So, Mr. Stewart, do you understand what we're talking about?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so, so it still gives you the opportunity to come and talk to me. While we're doing this, protecting the piece of property from the I-1 and just putting it to an RR so it can be developed or zoned in any situation we could possibly go at with approval. And that's what we're sort of talking about. So we're just protecting that northern section, but we want to act on the city piece of property right now.
I defer my comments to my associate.
Mr. Wilson?
The industrial, just to be frank with you. Just so we can explore all options with it and how we can potentially develop the property.
You can explore all options.
A major option.
If we put it to an RR, you can explore all options on it.
You still could, would you have any possibility of developing industrial on that piece of property?
We have not historically, but we've entertained, I don't want to say this now, but stored it in other places. But we, uh, we want to see growth out in this area, whether that's rooftops, uh, with responsible, you know, and varying rock types out there, or, you know, potentially some alternative uses, we want to see something happen.
Thank you. Any other comments, thoughts? Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
John's chopping at the bed.
Yeah, but I always mess them up. I think what I, I would like to propose, just to give you guys an idea of what I've heard and what I understand to this point, is that, uh, that we would, uh, that we would propose the change approval for the city property at this time and to change the zoning to R3 for the city property and change the zoning to the northern properties to RR. Does that sound like what we have discussed? Want to make sure that that's.
That's one of the things, certainly, yeah. And that as staff, we're completely comfortable with that.
Then general, general plan amendment, do we need to include that at this time as well?
That's appropriate, yeah, for the city property. Depending, for the city property, you wouldn't need to do that for the properties to the north.
Okay, I would make that proposal then, that the Quiet Valley general plan amendment and zone change, uh, be approved with the condition that the city property be rezoned to R3 and that the northern properties would be zoned RR with the other, uh, findings and issues as listed.
And include the general plan amendment be changed from, what is it currently, Dave?
Yeah.
From medium density to high density on the city property?
Yes, and so, yes.
I knew that's what you meant.
That's my, that's my.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Other business, we have anything else that we need to discuss tonight? Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Hey, thanks, guys.
Can you give me about two minutes to get signed into something? And then I'd take a couple of minutes just to give you an update on 2019.
You can't do anything in two days.
I can get signed in to an account.
See ya.
You're welcome, thanks, Ken, for coming.
Well, maybe I'm stumbling around here. Commissioner Mitchell something over there.
I used to haul hay off from that property that the city owns now. It was owned by the Olson Brothers.
I would have never thought it could grow hay.
Before it was, before it was turned into a gravel pit, it was really okay.
I'll hay on it now.
It's not going to take long, it's kind of interesting for me, a little bit curious. Councilman Davis noticed that once years, spent some time with the city council, chatting about some different things, kind of reporting on some different things. This is probably pretty boring. And I'm really anxious to provide some more detailed information on this here in the next couple of months. Just related to growth, kind of what's been happening, um, maybe some trends that might impact what happens here in the future. This doesn't surprise anybody, right? Pretty unbroken, you know, almost perfectly linear, uh, chart. Funny as it might be, on the particular day when this was presented to the council, we crossed perfectly 44,444 residents in the community. That was the mark that we hit that day. It's changed since then, but, um, that's the population that we had then. This, uh, a little bit of watch out colors here, it's a little bit funny, so maybe imagine with me that underneath the red lines, there is a white bar that goes down. Thanks, Ken. What the hell, it's didn't help much, huh?
We can imagine.
And I think this is, this is really, this is really curious.
No, doesn't change it.
Number one or number two?
That's odd, but, uh, what we don't necessarily see illustrated really clearly are single-family homes that were built. So one way to maybe just follow this, if we were to have a line that would show the total number of homes that were built in any given year in Spanish Fork, over 600 this year in 2000.
Counting single family as one and multifamily per unit?
This is by unit, yes, entirely by, yeah, so not by permit, but by unit.
Is that the year you were hired, Ken?
It was, yeah.
Man, what happened right after?
Ah, we see the trend now.
So is this like 550 then, you're saying 550 single family and then that many?
We did.
Multifamily, okay.
Yeah, it was crazy. Do you remember what was going on here? What happened leading up to this? I mean, the economy was strong, right? But there was something specific that happened in Spanish Fork. So we're.
Pressurized irrigation.
That was, that was there, but, um, we were really, really concerned. This, again, this kind of predates me, I got here first or second month in 2006, about available capacity at a waste water treatment plant.
Oh, that's true.
So there was a moratorium for the better part, I think, of a year in 2005 and part of 2006. So the sob story is this, um, moratorium gets put in place, demand gets stacked up, and it was stacked up, I mean, development was hot here everywhere. But Spanish Fork City didn't process any new plats. And my predecessor leaves, the position goes unfilled for a couple of months. I show up, honestly, like, two weeks after the moratorium was lifted. I show up, honestly, like, two weeks after the moratorium was lifted, and the floodgates opened, and it was a wild ride, no joke, until the recession sort of pulled things off. These first couple of years for me were, I, I frankly got into some really bad habits by just trying to keep up with everything. But this is the only year, I think, going back to here, where there were more permits issued for homes in Spanish Fork than any other city in the county. That's how, how hot things were. So, that's more than I expected to share, but, again, imagine the white here, that's single-family homes. The red is multifamily, that's everything from a duplex to twelve duplex, anything attached is identified with the red part of the bar. Does this surprise anybody that so few?
Yes.
Isn't that shocking?
This year?
I wouldn't believe it if I didn't know it was right. And in all candor, that's, that's, it's probably not going to be that way for a few years, moving forward. But, just a little bit about how we've been growing. One thing that will work to illustrate for you here in the next few months will be a glimpse into plats that you've approved, preliminary plats, and what that likely will translate into a year, two, or three years after that, in this context. Because really, this growth that happened in 2019 was largely the result of things that you saw several years before that, right? So, trying to maybe look out into the future. Now, this really sucks, because this is a cool chart. This just identifies that you picture basically a donut. So what you don't see here is the single-family component, so please use your imagination for that. Bizarre, right? This is Utah County trend, where now it's almost a fifty-fifty split between permits issued for single-family homes and multifamily. We're certainly, well, in 2019, which is weird, certainly an anomaly. This was us in 2018, almost tracking perfectly with the rest of the county, even a little bit higher, which I, again, this would have, or did surprise me. 2017, we didn't track closely with the county. This historically has been much more the case for Spanish Fork, where we're more like fif- twenty percent here, thirty-one percent, thirteen percent, and so forth, and that's the last year that we have. One other thing I want to point out, and go back to this, this is common, where when home prices go up, construction costs go up, land value goes up. What you see, see smaller homes, right? See more attached housing. Typically, our wages don't change as quickly with changes in the economy as home prices do, either going up or down. So, whereas a good part of the people that might have bought these homes here would have qualified in previous years for a single-family detached home, just because prices have changed, they no longer qualify, and people don't build typically what buyers can't qualify to purchase. So it tracks really closely, typically with just that economic trend. People couldn't give, right? Townhomes away. In these years, during the hardest part of the recession, townhome projects just absolutely, construction halted here, and some of those were getting finished up here. Maybe one or two things, total construction valuation. So this is two hundred million dollars worth of total valuation of new construction. We're about one seventy-five years, so actually a little drop in eighteen. This, for me, is interesting, because we went from, and now I'm maybe going to be a little bit off, I'm afraid of a spitball, about four hundred and fifty, was more than that. Roughly four hundred and fifty homes built in 2018 in Spanish Fork. That dropped to less than three hundred last year, but close to three hundred. So about a thirty percent, or a third fewer, permits for new homes issued, but this is all that we dropped in terms of total valuation.
Yeah, this is more expensive, that's why costs went up.
More expensive, that's it. Was I far off? Spitballing it?
In 2018, for single-family homes, we issued two hundred and ninety-nine. In 2019, we issued two hundred and fifty.
What's the total of the multifamily?
In 2018, nine hundred and thirty-five. Multifamily and single-family homes.
There's about four fifty in eighteen, and like I said, close to three hundred last year, but...
Four forty-three and two eighty-three.
So you get about a third plus. This is kind of curious as well. All in all, we issued permits for more complicated projects in 2019, hotels, lots of inspections, different things like that. So, one of the things that we have in our department, that I get to work with our building inspectors, so I started talking to them about September or October, when it was obvious that our numbers on building permits were going to be down. Like, okay, so this is when we get caught up on this project, and this project, and this project, right? That you don't have time to get to, because you're so busy doing inspections. I'm looking at just the permits that we're issuing, thinking they should have some time on their hands, right? Well, no, I was wrong. They were just about as busy in 2019 as they were in eighteen, so. Touching up to, maybe the last thing probably worth touching on, but just, the volume of work that we have coming through our office relative to application fees, if that's a good measurement, continues to go up. That means new projects, whether they're commercial, residential, or anything else. We still see a lot of that, there's a lot in our pipeline, and maybe just to end on that, we're here later tonight than I really had hoped to be, partly because, I want you guys to get out of here, you're going to have some long meetings here in the next couple of months. Maybe not the most positive way to end, except that there are a lot of good things happening in the community, in my opinion, but we have our challenges as well. Do you have any questions about any of this?
That's exciting. An interesting part, too, is that the list goes up, that means we're reviewing more and more and more, and you guys are approving more and more, it's just they're not getting the permit. So the hideout storage, and similar projects, it's like they've been approved, we've gone through, they paid all the money, they're pull the, they, they just don't pull the permit. Or, and all the townhomes and other, and they've, they're ready to go, they just haven't pulled the permit. So, there's quite a few that are just ready to start constructions. Either they fall off the earth, or they take six months to get a paper in that they, most people take a day to get in.
They get their construction cost, and it's twenty percent higher than they thought it was.
What's that?
They tell me, seriously, it's more than twenty percent.
Oh, I live it every day. I'm the guy handing it to them, saying, here's the price.
And, you know, this is maybe a good reason to say, once again, thank you, we appreciate your work, you guys. Recent planning commissions, again, kind of from the concept of the work that you do now relates to permits that we issue in the future and neighborhoods that exist forever, you know? And there's been enough that's happened, I'll pick on Richard in a week and a half for a minute, from the time that you've been on the council, the planning commission, just think about the changes that have happened over that period of time. And, maybe I'll, I'll share a couple of other things really quickly. This is some other stuff that I talked to the council about.
Both, the declaration independence, any's?
So here, you approve neighborhoods with homes, what's the average lifespan of a home in the United States?
Hundred years.
It's actually more than like a hundred and fifty years.
Is it really? Wow.
And that was a number that I got several years ago, so my guess is that it's even longer now than that. What you approve doesn't typically change for a really, really long time.
At least in your lifetime.
That's very true.
Depends on the builder, though, right?
Little different story for non-residential stuff. Average lifespan there, thirty-ish years, thirty-two, thirty-three, something like that. So, again, what you do for the community definitely has an impact, we appreciate it, and we'll work out some logistics so that maybe some long agendas coming up soon can be bearable. We'll be in touch on that.
Right, bearable.
I, I've got a question to this, Strassel. Would you, if, if you know a long night is coming ahead, would you rather that be split into two meetings that month, or would you rather just tackle the bear?
There are multiple, there's going to be multiple long meetings, from what it sounds like, say, just...
Personally, I'd rather handle it as one, but to, I feel, I feel in the long meetings we've had recently, kind of, the people, the end of those meetings, I feel like they're getting maybe shortchanged a little bit.
They don't get a fair shake.
Yeah, so for their use, I, I would be in favor, I don't want to, but, of splitting it.
And I'm not opposed if it, if that came up where you can see in a month, there's a lot of stuff. Not opposed to looking every now and then to do in two meetings a month, if we needed to.
What about, and this is entirely about what's just convenient for you. Typically with agendas, even long ones, there are things where we have public hearings on, and other items that don't require a public hearing. I really don't like starting a public hearing before six o'clock, but what if we started the other part at five o'clock? Even if we didn't have a full quorum, typically those are more administrative items, where you don't have as much discretion, and even if we didn't have everybody here at five, you know, you could at least get through that, you know, kind of in lieu of having site visits, we could, we could handle some of that business earlier.
Five would be hard for me, but, like you say, the important stuff would come after six anyways.
This is another way, maybe, you know, I don't know if it's a particular hour of the evening, or just a number of hours that you sit there, or a number of hours that people sit in the audience, but at some point in time, the discussions just become less productive, for sure.
I felt pretty bad for some of these people who come, and they're scheduled at the end of the night, and they sit through several long, long discussions, and theirs is relatively short. And we might be able to schedule those a little differently, and get those people that are short.
Is it, is it ever a problem if we're, if our meeting starts at six, or like it currently is? If we know that most of the people in the room are here for a specific agenda item, is it okay to rearrange the agenda?
Which is kind of, I think, maybe to Kim's point.
I would have had no clue that we had the turnout that we did for tonight's meeting.
They weren't here.
We were talking to Julie, she's like, you really don't expect people to come? And I'm like, no.
So there's, there's no rule that preliminary plat stuff has to happen before general plan or zone?
No, even with DRC, we try to arrange it that way.
Okay, that's good to know.
But what we didn't, I, I've tried to guess that before.
It's hard.
To have the large crowd here, right? They're here for the item that's going to take forever, and that's typically how we put the agenda together, which leads to what John talked about, the guys that are here for the quick items. In the past, we put them at the end, so they have to sit through all of that.
They have to wait for...
And so, I think you're poisoned, kind of.
I remember a forty-five minute discussion about a conditional use permit on a cell tower exchange.
Yeah.
So you never know what one is going to generate the, I mean, you can generally predict, but some of those surprised me.
If any of you guys have strong feelings or ideas, let us know. We're, we're pliable, we'll send out notices for your eight-four meeting here in just about two weeks, so we have until then to have an idea as to how to handle that.
One thing that I'd caution about having more than one meeting is, is that I know that many of us have schedules that are pretty full, and, you know, when you can set aside that first Wednesday, it would might, you know, you might have to start looking at the first and third Wednesdays, or whatever it might be, and we'd just have to arrange our schedules accordingly. And, you know, that, that could be an issue at times. I have another assignment on Wednesdays, and I just put it off on the first Wednesday of the month.
It's good to announce twice.
You know, I may not, I may have to do some rearranging of what I do. If not possible, it's just...
I don't know what it's like for you guys, but if I have to go to meetings, I'd rather go to one, maybe four-hour meeting than two, two-hour meeting, or something like that, that's just me, but...
Well, we could take advantage of a break.
Right, absolutely.
A ten-minute break, that's made all the difference in the world.
Yeah.
We've done that, but a lot of times, it's not until we've been here for three, three and a half hours.
Just because Brad's a slave driver.
Sits back here and braids a whip.
Well, the good thing is, we could probably do a combination, and just do one meeting, but maybe start at five-thirty.
Something like that.
And you're always more than welcome to call either one of us and say, could we see the agenda? We see the staff report, you know, if you have a question or two, and we'd be more than happy to talk about them. Anything that we can do to help keep the night moving, I don't know.
Are we kind of set with getting our agendas on Friday? Or could they be a day or two earlier than that?
Before Tuesday.
Funny you right now.
I don't contend.
So, I have to apologize. I have gotten a new computer, and I thought that I had redid all my contacts, because as great as our IT is, we don't have uniform contact list for, like, the city. So every time we get a new computer, we have to redo all of our contacts. And so I thought that I had you on there.
Forgot a lot on those emails.
You did forget, that did not happen again.
Yeah, it did.
You are the, you are the new guy.
I need to be more... I need to make more of a point.
I don't think I was notified that you didn't get last month's.
No, I got last month's, it was Dave left me off on the last month.
Okay, well, I have you on there now.
But, maybe more to us and how we operate, and this is simply very customary with every city, Friday is a really big deal. And we've missed a few times in recent months about getting you both the agenda and all of the supporting materials, staff reports and that type of a thing. We've, I think, come up with a foolproof system. I'm ready to, to say that, I think those days are behind us, to where if there ever is a time where you don't have everything on a Friday, it's certainly going to be the exception and not the rule. Going earlier than Friday, though, becomes a little bit tricky, because oftentimes, items that are reviewed by our development review committee on a Wednesday morning end up being on your agenda the next week, and just simply getting the plans updated and a report prepared before Friday, I'd hate to commit to that. But Friday's very realistic, and...
The reason that I say that is, is that at times, when we do have a complicated issue that comes up, maybe advantageous to some of us to be able to talk with you guys prior to our, our Wednesday meeting. And I can't speak for everybody, but a lot of times when I get that on Friday, I don't even see it until Friday evening, and sometimes Saturday or Sunday, you know? Because I just don't check my email constantly. And so, I generally have already, you know, gone through it by Monday.
You know, there's another thing we could do, we can send you guys the tentative agenda.
You guys need to adjourn, real quick.
Yeah, we haven't adjourned yet. I did push stop before we adjourned. Let's adjourn.
I'm a "we adjourn."
So moved.